Good evening and welcome to the public hearing to accept and expend gifts and grants over $5,000 for the Merrimack School District. This is Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, and I will invite to the table Assistant Principal Peter Bergeron to introduce the opportunity for gift and grant and his guests.
Well, good evening and as Shannon says, my name is Peter Bergeron, Assistant Principal at Merrimack High School. And Merrimack High School, more specifically, the U.S. First Chop Shop Team 166 is accepting an award from, would like to accept an award from Albert Systems for $5,000. And Matthew Gage is our new advisor for the U.S. First Chop Shop Team. After taking over for Christopher Mardury Petrovic, who for many years led the U.S. First team here at Merrimack High School and did a really good job organizing in increasing the numbers each and every year. So we appreciated their time that they spent here while at Merrimack High School. They did a lot of good work. So Matthew has children in the system here in the Merrimack Public Schools. He is an associate professor at the University of Lowell, and he's going to talk about what we will use that gift for.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. So, running a first robotics program, as some of you may know, is not a cheap and easy thing to do. So registration fees for just registering the team are $5,000. Competitions range from $1,000 to $4,000. And we have a $2,500 budget that we, for just building the robot itself, as well as travel. And so, we were very fortunate to, that Albert Systems of America came to us and said, "We'd like to sponsor a team in the Merrimack, you know, here in Merrimack." And this is a very generous donation that they're giving us. It's going to allow us to buy a lot of the parts that we need, as well as it helps, it'll help us to pay some of the registration fees for the year. Our kids are working really hard and they have, are designing what we hope is going to be a really competitive robot, and they've set the goal that they want to go all the way to the first championships in Detroit. So that's several additional competitions that we need to rate, that this money would help us to be able to cover the cost for as well. And, you know, Albert has been a, you know, it's been a really enjoyable relationship to start to build because not only are they helping, have they provided monetary support for our team, but they're also helping us by providing us a practice space, which we need to have about a 30 by 30 square at least to be able to practice with our robot because of the size. And so they are, have offered us a small space in their shop. They have a couple of employees that'll be there to escort us because they have to, for security reasons, they have to escort us. And they're also offering to help us with machining some of our parts. So they're very, they become very supportive in a very short time of our team. So, I can, I guess if there's any other questions, that's sort of a nutshell, in a nutshell, what they're, you know, what this would help us with.
Thank you, Matt. And I will say that it's a public hearing, so the first thing we do is we offer up the opportunity for the public to ask questions about the donation of $5,000 or greater. So first, if there's any public that would like to ask questions of this donation, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, are there any questions from the board? Seeing none. So, at this point, we can close the public hearing. And later in our meeting, which is under, we will be able to take the, item number seven, by the way, we will be able to take this public hearing input and including your testimony and be able to vote on that. So again, thank you for your time. Thank you for reaching out to Albert and thank you for their offer of partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you all. At this time, I'd like to welcome you to the meeting of the Merrimack School Board this Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. If you could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is public participation. Anyone from the public that would like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close public participation. We're going on to item number three, which is state advocacy for school impacting bills in current legislative session. So first, I'd like to welcome any state legislators that would like to come to the table so that we can accept, you can accept our testimony and we can ask some questions about the bills that you may be able to clarify for us. And so at our table tonight, we have State Representative Rosemary Rung, who by the way, kicked off this collaborative initiative and thank you for sending us the docket of what was coming to bear. And, and we thank you, and that's how we're here tonight. We talked about collaboration early on and this is our great opportunity to do it. Welcome State Senator Shannon Chanley and State Representative Dick Barry. So thank you all. And this is, I think, we've had a couple meetings with you since, in the last year. So thank you for your continued interest in the school district operations. So, back a couple of months ago, we got a list of potential bills and it was provided to the board to kind of review and talk about what could be impacting. And there are things we may have a couple of questions on as well. So, based on the comprehensive list and then taking it out to the list that would be impacting school districts. So, I'll kind of start running through them. It's a big list, by the way, so we're going to go through as many as possible. And if, if there's any questions along the table, just kind of bring them up. But if you have, you know, opinions you want to share with our, our state elected officials, that would also be great. So the first one is 2020-2035. And actually, I think it's also referencing a later one because it looks like a repeat. So I will reference that later.
Shannon, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Thanks. The, when I gave you that list, those weren't actually bills yet. They were LSRs.
Right.
So the LSR number's fine, but if you, there should be a short description of the bill as well.
Right. So, I'll give you the LSR and then I'll, I'll talk about the descriptor.
Okay.
So 2020-2035 is relative to changing a people's school for assignment because of a manifest educational hardship. And so, that one, I believe, I think, I don't know of any of these that aren't going forward, so correct me if I'm wrong. So when you talk about changing your people's school or assignment because of a manifest educational hardship, and, you know, I'll just open it up to administration as well on this. But things we look at are budgeting for tuition for those alternative schools. So that, that would be an unfunded mandate for us if it becomes something where it's forced from the state as a, as a practice. So do you, can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I really can't comment on any of those bills because I haven't read the final bill. What I would like to do is take those back and get information. And some of them may even have been introduced as amendments rather than. So, maybe that would be the best way to proceed. I can take them back and then I can get back, send you an update in the next day or two and.
That would be great. And when it looks like it's going to push, it's going to come to shove. I think the other thing is we can bring this back up on a future agenda item. But when I'm looking at what you provided us, and maybe we should take it from a more holistic approach, and I can give you, let's take from a high level of things that impact our district. I know that there are some specific ones that would impact, you know, things that we get concerned about all the time, which is student safety. And I know that Mark has had some ideas about that as well. Now, I will turn the mic over to him for that.
So, would it be okay if I were to just point the, our, our guests on the board to areas that we think are particularly.
That would be ideal, absolutely.
So, the 2020-2063, establishing the office of school counseling and psychology, establishing the position of school counselor coordinator and making an appropriation therefore. I just would say that Merrimack is by no means the only district in the state of New Hampshire that is encountering significant challenges with students and student mental health. And Merrimack has led the way in the state of New Hampshire on that particular issue. And I think, and we think, not knowing the details, but that it certainly bears the attention of our legislative delegation because we certainly feel that state representation on this particular item is of utmost importance. This is a classic case of this local districts cannot do this alone. And so I would just say that pending more information, it would be very, very interesting to us to know a bit more about that and to encourage the delegation. If they want to reach out to us with specific information about what we see every day and what our challenges are that are real, then I invite any of our administrators to be available to you for that purpose. I would also just point to 2020 and 22.
Excuse me, would you, would you back up and give me the first bill again?
So this, this.
There is no 2063.
This is 2020-2063, and this is establishing the office of school counseling and psychology?
Those are LSRs.
Right.
We have a list of LSRs, Dick, so if you can cross-reference an LSR.
Should I push that? Yeah. Okay. I think this, the way we're going to approach it more holistically, as the chairwoman said, I think is a good idea because each of these LSRs, when they were entered, we only, we only know them as LSRs by title. There are, the bills are now available on the general court website. So if you give, but we would have to try to cross-reference. And some of those may have been withdrawn, can't say any were. But we have in, how, Senate Education, I pulled up, oh, there's probably 34 bills in Senate Education. I'm sure there's, there may be 50 or so in House Education. So I think if we can hear from you and your general concerns.
Sure.
That's really helpful to us and we will come back with reports. None of, some of the hearings have just begun last week, so.
Okay.
They're just.
Excellent.
Not all bills even had numbers until yesterday.
Oh, good. We missed much. Thank you.
So this process is helpful?
Yes.
Okay. So then, I'm sorry.
Dick?
I have LSR 2063 is establishing the office of school counseling and psychology, establishing the position of school counselor coordinator and making an appropriation therefore.
Yes.
That's the one.
So we do have, we do have the ability to look at at least the titles on them and that we don't have to write them down.
Got it.
Okay.
Perfect.
Next one?
Thank you. So the next one of interest to the district is, so this would be LSR 2020-2217. It's adding a definition of reasonably described to the right to know law. And then related to that, 2218 is relative to the cost of production of records under the right to know law. These are of significance to the school district, both in terms of the, you know, every penny counts and so paper costs a lot of money. And that is, in some cases, not an insignificant amount that we bear every time there's a right to know request. In addition, depending on the nature of the right to know request, that is significant personnel time. And so, I just offer to you that these are not, these might seem like simple things or it might seem like, well, if just, I'm just asking, what's the big deal? But three, four, five, six more, ask. The personnel requirement, it's just a real thing. And, and there are other duties that a person in our office has to attend to. So, I just share with you that that would be something to consider just a little bit more deeply because there is not a no-cost impact or a, particularly relative to personnel as well. HB, 22, LSR 2227, requiring secondary schools to grant educational credit for certain courses completed. New Hampshire has a long and proud history of local control. And this is one that, and related items that have come from the state or from the DOE in recent years really challenged that dramatically. And, and so I don't know what that means or what certain courses are or who defines those certain courses, but it runs afoul of our tradition and I think it bears a lot of attention.
I think you're also going to play into 2020-2039, which is relative to credit for alternative extended learning and work-based programs.
That's correct, for the same reason. So.
Absolutely.
No need to even say more about that.
Honestly, I think it, it all ties back to the Learn Anywhere Initiative that's coming out of the DOE. And honestly, when you talk about the rigorous standards for which we all design our coursework, to have that taken out of the hands of local control and then offer credit for something that may not meet our, our base standards for curriculum depth. That, that, something that, you know, flies in the face of, you know, a diploma that we would have to confer with our name on it. So that's just a thought I have on that.
I completely agree. I would also draw your attention then to 2293, which is establishing a committee to study the reporting criteria of chartered public schools. I would say that public schools, rightly so, are very scrutinized. I want to stress rightly so. We support charter schools, but it is a fact, fact that there is not equal reporting requirements for the public schools and the public charter schools, just not. And I think that that bears further investigation. We are often compared, but the comparison stops at the door when it comes to issues of reporting and, and responsibility. So I would just point that out. 202318, relative to the use of, no, I'm sorry, 2318, yes, relative to competency assessments. And 2319, relative to the statewide assessment report. Neither of those titles are particularly clear to me in terms of what they mean, but from a practical perspective, I'll tell you this. I've been in Merrimack for 10 years and we have had four statewide assessments in 10 years. So here's what that means. It means that every time there's a change in the assessment or in the reporting of the assessment, you have an entire body of teachers who need to learn and understand and implement that assessment. It requires a tremendous amount of startup from training to implementation. And it also makes it virtually impossible to talk about trends in student performance when statistically, you would have to have three consistent years of a single assessment to be able to talk about a trend. And we have not, not just Merrimack, the state of New Hampshire has not had that opportunity in this last decade. So I recognize that it's a very significant issue, accountability around assessments, but it's worth sharing with you that there is significant impact about the significant number of changes to those data assessments over a period of relatively small decade, four assessments in a decade. You can imagine what that has, has meant to the validity of any report that you get relative to test results. So when we do great, I don't say that that is a trend anymore than when we do poorly. I say that that's a trend, that there are some who'd like to make it so. So I would merely point out that it would be very good to understand what that means and then to try to advocate for some stability when it comes to state assessments. And then Chair Barnes referenced relative to school records retention and disposition.
And so I. If you'd like, I can, I can read the, the bill for the competency.
Perfect, thank you.
It's a very simple, new paragraph, amending RSA 193H2 statewide performance targets, high school competency assessments. Every high school is defined in RSA 19423 shall have in place a competency assessment for each course offered in the high school in accordance with minimum standards for public school approval as adopted by the State Board of Education and shall submit a paper copy or electronics version of such assessment to the Department of Education no later than June 30th of 2021. In subsequent years, high schools shall annually submit to the department only new or updated competency assessments by June 30th. Is there, what's the flaw in that piece that you?
I, I've not prepared to, I'm not thinking there's a flaw in any of it. I, I, you've just given me information I didn't have before because I hadn't had a chance to see that whole thing. So I, I'm not suggesting there's necessarily a flaw. I'm merely trying to point out that only seeing relative to competency assessments and statewide assessment reports, just that information, less than what you just shared, it raises a question for me about what it all means and what impact it has. So I'd love to be able to process that and understand. There may not be a flaw.
So let, let me share with you the mechanism to get there, if you would like. If you want to go through these, and you can look at the, the text of the bill yourself. Later on, we can do this now. But instead of going in and on the newhampshire.gov website, there's a log-on to get, not a log-on, but a link to the LSR. You can look up the LSR and within it, you will see a little thing that says HB 1432. Click on that and that's the, the text in the body.
Thank you very much. Should I continue?
Absolutely.
So, the next, I would just draw your attention to would be 2441, relative to special education services for children in charter schools. Again, looking for more information, but I would just point out that there is, has been a cost associated with that that is borne by the public schools. And, and so I think it just bears understanding a bit more about what that impact would be to our district and its residents. 2614 is something that I'm so grateful that this legislative delegation responded so eagerly to back in the fall relative to the Medicaid to schools program. I know that there's a lot of action on that, but since it's here, I just want to, again, stipulate what a significant factor that has been and could continue to be for the way that we are able to apply for reimbursements. And so I know that there's a lot of work on that, but I couldn't let the opportunity pass to not just.
And I think the number we're at is, what we would have billed, we're at 10% of what we would have billed had the standards, the policy not changed, coming out of Concord. Is that on? Sorry. Thank you.
There is the hearing tomorrow morning in, there are two bills. One is a Senate bill, one is a House bill. The Senate bill will be heard tomorrow morning in Senate Education Committee, Educational and Workforce Development Committee. There is also a public hearing at DHHS on the rule, the proposed rules. And I know there's also an amendment in the works, so there is a lot of movement right now. Nothing is in place, but certainly a lot of testimony is coming in and a decision will be made fairly shortly on, at least on the Senate bill and move from there. But I know a lot of stakeholders are taking part in the discussions.
Thank you, Senator Chanley.
May I just comment on that?
Absolutely. Yeah, please do.
So I just want to, I'm very grateful, we, I'll speak for myself. I'm very grateful to the entire Merrimack delegation for taking this so seriously when we first brought it to the delegation back in the fall. And, and we know that we're well represented, our interests are well represented. So I just thank you for that. And then I would draw your attention to 2633, which is relative to the acceptance of high school course credits from certain schools or education agencies. This relates to the item, an item that I referenced before. The, there's a lot, unless there's more to be told now, there's a lot of questions there about what schools or agencies would we be asked or perhaps required to accept credit from. And again, I don't, I don't raise any of these because I have an immediate objection to them, but it is something rather that there are questions about that. You can understand where we would, where we would have some questions. The last that I would draw your attention to, from the school administration perspective, would be 3016 Senate Bill, relative to chartered public school use of unused school district facilities. And that just merely is a question as to, you know, would that be subject to, there are lots of questions, whether there, whether that would be gratis, whether rent could or should be charged for such a use or, or what the, what the requirements, if any, would be. So again, just further questions, not an automatic disagreement, just begs a few other questions. So from, from our perspective, those are the items that are of particular interest to us. And it may be that there are more from the board's perspective, but that would be what we would share.
Would you repeat that Senate bill, is it 3016, did you say?
That last one, yes. 3016, relative to chartered public school use of unused school district facilities.
Okay, yeah.
I don't have it. It's not on the system.
And a couple that I had noted were, back to 2448, which is relative to non-academic surveys administered by a public school or a charter public school to its students. When you're talking about surveys at all, local control is, I think, you know, where we feel that that should lie. And then also, when you're talking about, you know, record keeping for parental options, opt-out for any type of survey question is, is most important to us versus opt-in because the administrative task of opting in for every student versus opting out for those few that are not choosing to take a, a survey, it's been an administrative burden. And I think that when you're talking about what you're trying to do with, with some of these surveys, it's, you know, it's not giving us the opportunity to get the best possible sample set of data when administratively opting into everything is creating that barrier. So I think the sample surveys, you can get a lot stronger data if you have a more appropriate sample set. And anyone that has a kid or a grandkid and has seen a backpack, that, that's a, that's a black hole. So, but, you know, where, that's where, you know, we obviously communicate and push out via things like Power School. But, you know, when there's a physical paper that has to come in for everything, opt-in is creating a logistical nightmare for our, for our district.
Shannon, just to comment on that, I believe that bill pertains to non-academic surveys.
Yes.
But just to let you know, I have heard from a couple constituents who support that bill because they don't want their child to participate in any non-academic surveys at school.
And that, that's fine. That's why an opt-out would be optional. But when you have an opt-in, that means that instead of getting two opt-out papers, I get 30, 30 opt-in papers. And, you know, just two are, you know, have, you know, are choosing not to opt in, so they don't opt anything. Or you have 32 papers and it has opt-out or opt-in on the paper. So now you're getting 32 papers back instead of two papers that say, "I don't want my child participating." That's fine. We'll give you alternate activities to do. So it's fine. We, we want those parents to have that, that ability to opt out, but then opt out versus having every parent tell us on every, every thing that requires a permission slip to opt in.
So maybe there's a possibility that, I'll, I'll check out the bill, I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
That maybe there could be something done, like a blanket permission. I think that's done for photography releases at the beginning of the year. So if parents, they'll be, assume it's an opt-in, but if they want to be noticed on each survey, they could do that. Then that small minority of parents who don't want their children to participate, they would be the only ones whose permission would need to be sought when each survey comes.
That's, I think that's a more proper managerial strategy. And Naomi?
So I think that part of the issue on this one may be, and again, I'm only looking at that bit of text I have here, that non-academic may not be a granular enough term, as in a non-academic survey might be lunch choices. And that's something that we need the student body to give feedback on and opting into whether or not you want to tell us your lunch choices becomes very cumbersome. I think that potentially what you may be hearing is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that parents are concerned about non-school-related or topics that are controversial to them being put on surveys. And there may be a need to separate those in some way in order to make, make it more viable.
Yeah. It may also just be a perception people have of time on task. You know, that maybe they don't want the school day interrupted with non-academic things. I mean, I don't know, but that's, that's a good dialogue to have with parents about, you know, what are their perceptions about the school day?
Madam Chair, are there criteria wherein you would like to see the parents opt in? Maybe that's the smartest thing to do, what does it have to do so that you think require parents opt in versus the opt-out?
I honestly think that anything that, you know, a parent would want to opt. I honestly think that anything that, you know, a parent would want to opt into is something we would normally standardly do. And it's all about what do you choose not to participate in? So that's, again, exception management is a lot easier of a task than, than standard management. But I'll call it, you know, like standard rule management.
So would you have some suggestions as to what we say, these are the ones that you need to opt out of?
I think, yeah, I'll, I'll just blanket it for you. I think any survey or any, you know, any survey of a student should have an opt-out option and not an opt-in option. Because of the administrative burdens. And I think Naomi has two cents on that as well.
I'm sorry, I don't want to make a bigger deal of this than is necessary, but my perspective only. One divides research from informational surveys. Best practice when it comes to certain types of research, I wouldn't expect a high-quality researcher to ask for opt-out because the standards for certain types of research require that you ask parental permission. So I think that anytime there is a kind of a study brought to us or some kind of activity that ethics would require that parents be asked, then that's something we should be asking for opt-in as opposed to opt-out. But those happen relatively infrequently compared to the ebb and flow of surveys that have to do with life at a school. Does that help?
That's clear.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any, have you missed anything on that? Awesome. I'm just doing a scan because I think you covered a lot of what I had, Mark, so. I know it's, you know, I'm not sure where this is going to go, but twenty-sixty is relative to possession firearms on school property. I know that that's come up in a number of legislative sessions in prior years. And I think, you know, when it comes to, and I know just from my experience at New Hampshire School Boards Association, the challenge that we're dealing with is if it's not a statewide standard, things like cooperative school districts could have some towns with some policies and other towns with other policies. It's going to be very difficult for our, for our state law enforcement, you know, neighboring law enforcement agencies that are coming to do assists to be able to keep a handle on, on what that is. So I think that the discussion was, was happening. If such a standard of, you know, having a standard of possession of firearms on school property, if it's to be prohibited, that should definitely be handled. That's one area where I don't think local control is the appropriate, the appropriate methodology. Because honestly, enforcement, appropriate enforcement of that will become problematic. And that's, but it's again, you know, we're interested to know more as it comes to bear what the content of that, that bill really, you know, entails.
Yeah, I think that's the same bill that passed the House and Senate last session, but it was vetoed by the governor and so it was reintroduced. I actually supported that bill because of the local control component because the school board could decide who they wanted or to carry a firearm on school grounds. So if there are people that petition the school board that they wanted to keep their firearm with them, even if they're at school, it would be a choice of local control. Mainly I'm looking at it from Merrimack's perspective because we aren't a cooperative school district. We have our own police force. So that, the, the issue you raised is the first one I've heard about it, that there was a, an issue with cooperative districts.
Not only cooperative districts, but you're going to get cooperative assistance from other towns. And if they're, if, I'm just going to use as examples, not that they, I'm sharing their position or anything, I don't know them. But Amherst is doing an assist for us because we have, and, you know, an armed person on campus. We don't, we choose not to have it. And again, this is all examples. But Amherst, you know, doesn't choose to have it. So then if there's assists, they don't understand the, the rules of engagement as, you know, as other forces would collaborate. Same with sheriffs, same with state, state police. So that's, that came up, it was probably a forty-minute discussion last year in Concord at the delegate assembly of this New Hampshire School Boards Association, that enforcement could become very tricky.
Allowing the local control.
Allowing local control, where state control would have a consistent standard across the state. So any layers of, of, you know, law enforcement would, would be on page about how to address that issue, whether it be prohibitive or whether it be allowed.
Well, I personally, I have, I have a feeling it's going to meet the same fate as the bill from last year.
Okay. Thank you for that. Let's see. And some of these, I think, you know, when I'm looking at, I just, it's, I'm surprised at them. I'm not really sure where it's going. Things like duty, twenty-one twenty-four, duty school superintendents regarding criminal history records checks. Their jobs are pretty big. So I'm, I'm really not sure if, you know, if it's expected that Mark will now be overseeing and managing and updating all these history checks because we have close to eight hundred employees in the district. And he's busy with, you know, the, almost four thousand students as well. So I'm interested to see where that goes, but, you know, I don't have enough information to, to help. Guide, guide what your thoughts might want to be on that. A couple of them were about religion. I do think, you know, one was twenty-two fifteen, which is recitation of the Lord's Prayer in public elementary schools. And there was another one, twenty-four forty, relative to religious activities of teachers and students in public schools. I think that the public school is the place of learning, but not a place of, of engagement for, for a specific faith. You know, we are here to be inclusive and diverse. So that's always been the position of public schools. And I think that that's, you know, something that when it comes to the management of that for family choice, that that, that's something that would be of, of consideration when, when you go, if it becomes a bill. So at this point, that's what I had. That was not, not on Mark's list. But those are things that I think as things are coming up, just so you have a thought of where we might be at. But when you do have those bills coming to bear, you know, if you want to get on the agenda items, we had at one point legislative updates consistently on agenda items. But really, if you'd rather make it where it's, you know, you're going to want our guidance or you want to provide updates, we can do this on a regular basis and we'd be happy to. We welcome it.
Yeah, that would be great because I know that list, I probably gave that to you in early December. And the bills were introduced to the House, January eighth, that's. And we're hearing, you know, there's, there's hearing starting now. There's bills in my committee that we're going to be execing or having an executive committee vote next week. So things are moving pretty quickly. So I'll look over these bills based on what you've said in your feedback. I'll, I'll send you the text, but they may be scheduled for hearings before you have the next school board meeting. So I'll probably, if there's something that you want me to, or Dick or anybody to sign in and support or testify, that's, we, we would have to move pretty quickly on that. I think the crossover date, that's when the House bills have to go to the Senate and Senate bills go to the House. That's in early March.
And to that end, so we are like at the, the very wrong date to have our meeting tonight because you're just, they're just turning into bills. But I think, you know, when you're, when you came to us and talked about collaboration, you're saying we want the school board's position. This is the only way to get it.
Yeah.
That we would meet, we would come to the table, we would have a discussion. The bills are of relevance to us, that we have a majority position that we can share with you, whether it be on consent or via a formal vote. But without that, you know, I could tell you my position on things. You know, any board member can do that, but it's not the position of the board. So we're individuals who happen to have, you know, an understanding of education and can help there, but not as, not as a body. Dick, did you?
Yeah, I think what Representative Rong is trying to tell you is you should be doing that now. You should be looking at the bills. There's, this, this document is online, the House Record. It tells you which bills are coming up, when it gives the bill number, it gives you a brief description of it. And unless you folks, somebody here either sits down or says, come in, let's sit down as a group and do it, you're not going to get a chance to get feedback to us before these get voted on.
Agreed.
That's what she's trying to tell you.
Nope, and I'm, I'm hearing what she has to say. So again, it's, you know, our first year of real ability to collaborate. And if there's something that comes up that's of great consideration for the, that a special meeting would have to be held, we would absolutely consider doing that to be able to just vet that issue if, to give you the, what you need to, to move forward. But, you know, I think hopefully having the idea of, of where the board in the district would be impacted by this, by some of these bills and how they're written, you know, we will definitely, you know, keep dialogue. But you're right, not all of it's going to happen next week. We do have a meeting the first Monday in, in February. That's our next meeting. And, and so some things will happen, but I don't think it's going to be so much that we are going to miss the boat either. So we'll just keep dialogue open, but absolutely, we'll keep an eye on that.
And I do, I think each of us appreciates even individual feedback. I know Naomi gave me some great insight into a bill last year regarding teacher tenure. And it influenced my vote. So, you know, that's still important too because you help educate us. So you can educate us individually or as a board.
Right. And, and honestly, thank you for taking the time to meet with our administrators too. Because at the end of the day, and all of, you know, all of our elected officials, it's, we're an open door for that because, you know, at the end of the day, they have to, you know, they have to run the district by, by how these laws work. And, you know, they can give you insight on the, the operational and, and budgetary impacts of some of these bills. You know, the things I would always say is guiding principles are, you know, wherever local control can be had, the, the, the rules, the guiding rules should be local control carries the day. And then of course, if any bill would create an unfunded mandate, remember that's coming out of something else because we had that happen last year with sanitary products. That was tens of thousands of dollars. And I know for Rochester, I think it was in the six-figure range. So when you have those unfunded mandates in the middle of a budget year, it's coming from somewhere else. And that doesn't mean that we were prepared to do that. So it, it does impact operations. So whatever we can do to be ahead of, of that unfunded mandates, or when you have these initiatives, either have a, a startup fund. So again, when you said that we had to have the sanitary products provided at no cost, well then, you know, that would be fine if we had the machines in the, in the startup for the first fiscal year, but then we'd have the opportunity to budget it. But we didn't have that. So we had to take out of other things that we had, had spending initiatives on. So those are the things we think about.
What was that that we missed on? Because we, we definitely looked to see, A, it's not an unfunded mandate, but B, what your school budget system, what, what the system is when you're going to it, recognizing that you've got to do your budget now and it's for the following year. And we try to make certain that those things are two year before your budget is done or we make them applicable a year after that.
So I think, go ahead, Bernard.
I think the, I think the particular item that Chair Barnes is referring to was the, the installation of sanitary.
Products.
Products for students in, I think, grades five through twelve. And I, I, I think that what Chair Barnes is referring to is that it, it came at a point when our previous budget had been developed and we were in it. And, and yet the requirement was that they be installed and available. And so the experience of the district was, you know, we're certainly going to obey the, the law. And we did so. But in that particular case, it was awkward because we hadn't budgeted for that in the previous season. And the requirement for them to be in place, I, I don't have that in front of me particularly, but was, was such that we needed to make sure that we had the funds available. But as Chair Barnes said, they had to come from another appropriated place. And so we, so that would be just one example.
And, and I know that Representative Barry and I both voted against that. So that was one of the reasons, I had a few reasons for it. So it might be good for you to, maybe we could share our voting record with you. I mean, it is online, so you could see, because we're probably a lot on the losing side of votes.
And from my perspective, I, I don't, you know, it's not my personally business, what, how people, I just wanted to, you know, how people vote or what, sure, everybody cares deeply and people can agree to have different, this is just a case where it was an example of what became a challenge to us. Neither good nor bad. It just was a particular challenge.
Well, it, it's a good, it's, it's good to know the insight just because it gives us something that we can debate on the floor. We can bring that perspective to the floor. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I, I, I hear what you're saying in the big picture. So even though we didn't, we may not be talking about specifics tonight, I appreciate the comments and the general comments you're making. You know, the things that we should be looking out for, the, the bills, just flagging the bills that raise some concern for you, whether it's something that you may support or not support. It will cause me to take a closer look at it perhaps just because you've raised that issue for me. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for this year's legislative session? Excellent. More to come. I'm sure of it. Thank you all for coming.
You need, you need to know how to get to this?
Absolutely. If you have a, a quick guide, then we'll be glad to hear you walk through it.
Newhampshire.gov and, and go under the legislative and it'll, it should be, should be pretty clear.
And I have a guide to navigating the General Court that was written by another representative that I often sent. So I will send it to the chair and let you distribute it and use it as you wish. It's, it's just a, it's, it's just a little bit of a, a little guidance. And I, I think the General Court website is fairly user-friendly, but I will send that to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
There are two calendars. One is the House calendar.
Okay.
And one's for the Senate. It goes through, tells you what it is, what day it is, what, what office it's in. If there's something that, that jumps out at you, please call. We'll respond.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, and on the, on the new, I just Googled New Hampshire General Court. It's the first thing that comes up. I click on it. The homepage has a calendar, so it'll show that day, every single hearing. If you go see more, it'll put up all the calendar. Hearings have to have a, I think it's a five, it's five or seven day notice. Subcommittee's need twenty-four hours, but they're all listed. So there may be a public hearing that, that you might see for next week. And you can click on, there's a, the bill is hyperlinked. So it, it may be a little bit of a challenge to get there. I don't really, I just Google it and it comes up. But it, it should provide everybody the information they know if they want to have that, some advocacy regarding that bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming. It was not warm out today.
And you do realize that any public hearing, you're welcome to come up, fill out a card and talk.
Thank you for.
Or make us do it, either one.
Well, you got the freezy pass, Dick. Although it's getting better for Merrimack all the time. Thank you. So on that note, I forgot to mention before item number three. Vice Chair Sinigal Yumi is excused from tonight's meeting for business travel. And Student Representative Johanna Caroma is excused. She actually made it quite, through quite a bit the other night. She's struggling with the flu. A lot of people are getting the influenza, but she's also in the middle of midterms and finals. So we wish her a good end of her first semester, first semester senior year. So on that note, we are on to item number four, which is the update on the K-12 English Language slash Reading Curriculum Development Process. So I will turn the mic over to John Fabrizio and you can invite, or you can introduce those coming to our table. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much. It is my pleasure tonight to invite our language arts coordinators and our department head at the high school forward tonight. And I'm going to start by introducing Dr. Jenny Callen, Jeanette Cody, Holly LeBelzak, Jan Moynihan Cooney, and Dr. Nikki Rowe to the, to the table. Absent tonight from our group, again, struggling with some of the, the flu going around right now is Nicole Diggins, who's a major part of our team, but couldn't be here with us tonight. And I talked to her today and she felt awful, but we wish her well at home again and a speedy recovery. Tonight we decided to, this is a kind of a proactive step that after a conversation with Dr. McLaughlin, we talked about the work we're doing with our language arts coordinators and our department head at the high school, looking at our English and Language Arts curriculum. In the past, I've been present when Mark's presented about updates on curriculum and where we are currently. However, I'm not sure if we ever did a proactive stance of talking about why we would look at a curriculum and why we would start to open one up to, to, to move forward and for revision. And tonight we're going to kind of walk you through a, a little historical process that has happened and look at kind of why we've decided to look at our English Language Arts curriculum. And, and to begin, in front of you at your table, and there's more copies over there too, is our Merrimack School District RTI model. And RTI again is Response to Intervention. And it really looks at continuum of services and supports across our district and how we maintain our goal of increasing independence and including students' outcomes and, and students' participation and how we constantly try to grow our students across that continuum. And when we have a curriculum that we look at and say, are we meeting the needs right now? Are we growing in the areas? And when we have a curriculum that we look at and say, are we meeting the needs right now? Are we growing in the areas we're hoping to grow? And is this continuum in place um effective towards this curriculum? Um we question that. And right now, with our English Language Arts um curriculum, we have some questions and as it currently stands. So it's time to look at it, revise it, and come up with um some new thoughts and ideas so we're aligned with our curriculum pre-K through twelve. And that's not an easy task, and it hasn't been done for a long time. You'll hear about that tonight. So um I've said enough, and I'm going to turn it over to um, right now, I'm going to turn it over to um Jeanette Cody. And Jeanette's going to start off our presentation. And um in front of you, you have a copy of our PowerPoint. We couldn't get our technology to work very well tonight, so we went with a a printed copy. And again, there's plenty of copies over there on the table if anyone would like them. So Jeanette.
Good evening, everybody. Uh thank you for having us here tonight. We are very excited to Okay, we're very excited to share with you um our, the steps that we've taken thus far um to in in our, in our journey and in our next steps uh for English Language Arts in the Merrimack School District. So this is our team. Uh John introduced us already, but we are comprised of uh the K to four language arts coordinators at each of the elementary schools. So I am the language arts coordinator for Reed's Ferry. And um we have our English Department Head and uh Language Arts Coordinator at J M U's Nikki Rowe. And uh Nicole, and I do want to mention again, I know John uh had already said this, but Nicole Diggins, the Language Arts Coordinator at the middle school, has played such an integral role in our process. So I do want to make sure that she um is recognized in all of our work. So I'm going to start um by sharing how we got started on this journey. So I'll first take you back to nineteen ninety-nine when the English Language Arts curriculum was last revised. So it's in our binder right here, labeled readiness to grade twelve, when we had readiness, before my time here. Um so I'll just leave this right here. However, so with with that said, over the last several years, um we, with the adoption and the alignment of the New Hampshire state standards, um the teachers began using those standards in um with the, with the tools and resources that we've acquired over the years um in the district. And they've used those to plan their instruction and therefore leaving this curriculum a- as it is. So we'll fast forward a little bit to last September in twenty eighteen. Um Dr. McLaughlin came to us, came to one of our, actually our very first language arts coordinator meeting. And he presented us with a task. And his task was to um he wanted us to compile uh a a list or a chart of current and past ELA uh resources over the last, it ended up being ten to fifteen years. So but he first presented us, you don't have this, but I'm just going to show you for reference. It's a a just a little chart. Um and he he wanted us to kind of go through and to look back at historically where, what initiatives have we put into place, what programs or tools have we been using, and with the intention of analyzing it at the end and coming up with a, or generating a list of recommendations for future instructional planning. So we took our task and we got to work. And we met pretty much weekly to to work on this and quickly realized that this was not necessarily a simple task. Um it took many months to 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 research and go back in history. Some of us were here during that time, some of us were not. Um but it really gave us an opportunity to delve deep into where Merrimack has come from and where and where we are now. So in your packet, you actually have the the new chart that was born from all of this work. And it looks like it's a lot bigger than the original one. It looks like this. So I'll just walk you through it a little bit. Um we decided to organize it by components. So you'll see at the top that we started with best practices in pink. And then we moved over to teaching tools in blue. And then on the other side, in purple, we have our assessment tools. And then in yellow is where we noted all the the different initiatives. If you go down to the side in green, we decided to delineate what student um, what student population was served. And in most cases, it was K to eight. Uh there were some, there are some initiatives, in particular uh Inquiry or UDL, that were district-wide K to twelve. So we noted those in those places. Um the date that those initiatives were introduced, the status of the implementation, um any training provided, any PD or professional development, um or consultants perhaps that we had hired over the years uh were captured in that part. Um who needs training for the, for the the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year and beyond? And then finally, our future goals. So what were our goals for the eighteen, nineteen school year and then moving forward? So this is the information that we ended up capturing um over the time that we were, that we were working on this. One of the, one of the pieces that we did want to point out was on the back in the yellow, the cap and scales work. The cap work was created by a committee um of K to six, uh K to six teachers and administrators. And they unpacked and aligned the New Hampshire state standards and then also um aligned it with s- with formative assessments, with the intention of being able to collect some some data and how kids, to see how kids were performing um in relation to those standards. And then the scales work is essentially the same project, but at the middle school and seventh and eighth grade. So that is what the teachers had been using to guide their uh the the planning of their instruction, rather than looking at the old curriculum. Uh the cap and the scales work is what teachers had been using um up until right now. So this work showcases, it really showcases the growth uh in the Merrimack School District over the last ten to fifteen years in in relation to literacy, in relation to professional development, um as well as the future goals that we've, that we've um outlined on here, some of which have already been met um that we'll talk about in a little, in a little while. And it also, I think most importantly, created an opportunity for us to to delve deep and then provide a solid foundation from which to move forward from. We presented this chart in the spring of last year to district leadership, um along with the uh reflections and our, our, we we did analyze this and and ca- and came up with some reflections that Jenny will talk about in a few minutes. So we presented this chart and that to district leadership in the spring. And um so while all of these, while all of this work was happening in the K to eight world, um the high school is also working on uh their own uh work in terms of of literacy and moving forward. And uh we felt it was really important as we continued this to make sure that we collaborate with the high school. And and that work has been happening over um in the last couple of months, which has been nice. So I will turn it over to Jan, and she will talk about some of the high school's progress.
Thank you. Good evening. The English curriculum and course offerings have stayed current with um educational trends and students' educational needs due in large part to the English teachers' continual advancement of their practice. Everyone but our new hire has a master's or CAGS degree. Currently, we have one teacher who is working on her CAGS degree, another who is working on his Doctor of Arts degree, and two that are working on their PhDs. So this has really um been a wealth of knowledge for us to be able to draw from. Um in the past four years, um you'll see in this packet with the course descriptions that I've given, we have gone from four academic levels to three. So we currently offer foundations, comprehensive, and honors level. The foundations courses are now taught by our honors teachers so that we can ensure that our students will receive grade level content and the same novels as our comprehensive students um with the appropriate accommodations. We now also have dual enrollment courses where students can earn college credit through our Running Start program. In the packet that I've given you, it's um the course descriptions for the comprehensive level only. We now offer um interdisciplinary courses for freshmen and juniors. The World Civilization and Literature class is offered to freshmen at the honors level only. They petition to get into this course. And um at the, for the American Experience course, that's offered at the comprehensive and honors level. New this year is our switch from English twelve being offered for two semesters to being offered at just one semester. And this has allowed our seniors to be able to take more E- more English elective courses. So currently, this um next semester, we'll be running eight elective courses, creative writing, film literacy, journalism, philosophy, psychology and literature, public speaking, and new to Merrimack High School, sports literature, and true crimes. Next year, we'll be introducing a new course, um an introduction to theater, which actually we've offered in the past. We're bringing it back. Um also, in the packet, I offered the um state standards that we had worked on. Um although the novels and assessments are, differ from English teacher to English teacher, these state standards have been our guiding principles. When these standards got published, we worked together as a department to deconstruct the core standards into meaningful parts. And then we reexamined what we were teaching, the skills and knowledge in each of our grade level courses. And we made sure that what we were teaching aligned to these core standards. Um these standards have really helped us to develop our competencies. And it will hopefully help us to um develop our new curriculum. And then finally, in your packet, is this multi-tiered system of support. And due to the challenges of teaching the comprehensive courses, because the range of skills really um is large, the leadership team knew that we had to do something to bridge this gap for our struggling learners. So our goal was to make sure that all of our students were engaged and independent learners. So um we hope that um this system of support allows for that. If a student earns a um sixty-five or below, interventions are put into place. And um a team of teachers will meet to create an improvement plan. The students are assigned to the Skills Center during their study hall, and parents are involved in all of this process. If a freshman or sophomore earns a seventy or below on a test or a major assignment, they will be given the opportunity to do a recovery activity. And also relatively new is all of the teachers must post their instructional materials, notes, and study guides on power school learning, which is really helpful for our learning support staff and for our parents, and hopefully our students too, if they access it.
Thank you. Uh thank you for sharing that rich history. Um I like to think of it as a canvas that um sort of articulates the journey um that Merrimack has had. I am the newest member to the Merrimack School District on this team. This is my second year. So when we did this work, I have to tell you that I was much like you, hearing, you know, sort of for the first time in a a broad uh way, what has happened, where we are, and then thinking about where we want to go in terms of forward. So this was a very rich experience for me, and I have to tell you, I am just thrilled to be here. You have so many wonderful things working for you in this district and um many things for all of us to be grateful for. Um so as uh Jeanette had explained, we have our, you know, our canvas, so to speak, and we were asked to ti- to take a look at it and really think about and reflect upon and consider, what is it? Um what are the takeaways? This isn't based on data. It's based on our um I'd say contemplation of the things that we've been doing and where we've been. And you know, what do we think about that? And what are some things that we notice that are positives? And where are maybe some areas that we need to think about focusing on or addressing more um specifically? So when we presented to the leadership team, we brought these things forward. These were our reflections. And at this meeting, it was quite pivotal because they gave us feedback that we could then go and and ponder uh some more about, which led us to the work that we've been doing with John. So the first thing um that, and and we've all talked about the response to instruction, you know, system that you have in place, which is really key for us as um the language arts team, who are providing educators with highly, high-quality differentiated um core instruction. And so one of the things that we noticed was that we have a very dedicated staff in in Merrimack, and that they continue to grow professionally through the EPEC model, through ongoing professional development that occurs right there in the schools and in the classroom. But at the same time, we need to continue to provide them with professional development that um aligns our practices and helps teachers uh remain consistent, not only with our instruction, but the ways we're assessing students. And so we thought about, okay, we need to kind of get on it in the fall. And so we got together and we planned uh thirty professional development sessions with teachers in the elementary and upper elementary. Uh we provided um workshops in guided reading, uh word study, phonics and spelling. We also felt that there was a need to think about grammar and our mechanics and how that's incorporated into writing. That was an area we felt maybe we needed to, you know, work more on. So we are offering a book study this spring. It's happening actually now for teachers in the district through the Service Learning Project. Um we also, when we um provided the trainings, we looked at assessment. We sort of brought all teachers, because we hadn't really done, I think, a uh deep dive into the assessment uh for several years. So we reviewed the purpose of summative assessments that are given three times a year um in literacy and guided reading, as well as formative assessments, which are used to monitor student growth between those uh benchmark assessments. And then looking at that data and saying, how are we going to use that to drive our instruction? Um and when I think about the, you know, the response to instruction model, uh we need a triangle, triangulation of data in order to determine where, what are we going to do to support students at all levels? Um let's see. Uh so uh I think that really brings us to, when I think about um, or we think about, how are we addressing all students? Um we've mentioned Universal Design for Learning. It's a initiative that's happening district-wide. It's an opportunity for us to think about all of our students and how can we integrate everything that we're doing so that all students have access? How do we remove barriers um with our, in our instruction, um in our practices, in our buildings, so that all students can benefit from being a part of the core? And so with that, we had, we looked and said, hmm, how are we integrating curriculum across the content areas? How can we do that better? How can we integrate technology uh into core instruction more seamlessly? And again, across the content areas. And we also thought about how can we, how do we think about our students today? The students who we look at and say, this is what we would like to see of a Merrimack High School graduate. When we think about them, are we moving from teacher-led instruction to student-led instruction, instruction in an effective way? And I think we all agree that the Universal Design for Learning, UDL, model is a way that we can really support teachers in ways that can support kids better and help integrate so that, again, all kids have access. So, and the, the final thing was, we did start out with an essential question that guided our reflections and our work. But we received some great feedback from the principals, from the administration, I should say, about maybe shifting the focus of our question at the time, which had to do with how are teachers, you know, how are we supporting teachers to support kids? And sort of shifting that to, let's take a look at our, the students first, okay? Let's think about our, our kids, that high school graduate, and what we want them to achieve or what we hope for them. And then sort of design a question around that, and we're going to talk about that. So at that point, after the reflection, then this was passed from Dr. McLaughlin to Mr. Fabrizio. And I'm now going to pass it on to Nikki, because she's going to pick up the torch, so to speak, with the next part of our journey.
So this is where it gets really exciting, because this now leads us to this year. So we've done all of this historical work. It brings us to the summer. Well, summer's a wonderful time for language arts coordinators. We can get together, we can talk as long as we want. We all love the research. So we said, okay, what's next, Merrimack? We decided that the next thing that we needed to do was to look at all of the data that we collected, the reflections that we had, and pulled together a small team of administrators and sit and kind of play in the space where we were. And we could do that, it was summer. So we took Adam from the middle school, Marsha McGill from the Upper L, and Michelle Romaine from MES. And we sat down and we said, okay, we're really excited, what's next? We decided that we needed to have a plan to see what were all of our tools that we had in place to address the different learning strands that were so essential in English Language Arts. So we decided the best way to do that would be to create an Excel spreadsheet. And as you can see with the other charts that we've created, they become very lengthy. But this one was a smart one. We were able to manipulate it so that we could sort the data. So we would take an, an area of importance like comprehension. And we would label pre-K to eighth grade. And would list all of the tools that we had for comprehension. We would move on to another area, vocabulary and word study, and we'll list all of the tools. So we created this incredibly large spreadsheet of really old tools that we still had, old tools, but good tools that we had, new tools and tools that we hope are upcoming as we plan for our, our new budgets. We were really excited, because once we had all this done, we said, okay, now we know all the tools we have. So let's get to work and figure out what areas of needs we have. Are these tools the most effective tools? Let's start to plan vertically and align so that we're giving our students the best opportunity that we can give them with the time that we have. As we looked at the chart, however, we realized that the tool chart, our spreadsheet, and the Common Core or the New Hampshire State Standards, didn't give us everything that we needed. It gave us the what. We, we had a very clear guide as to what we were going to teach. We had tools to address that. We still needed to reflect on the value of all of those tools. But the how was missing. And the how was one of the most important parts. As we lingered in that time and really had that summer to talk about it, we realized that we were missing a very key element, and that was our curriculum. So we've been using the New Hampshire State Standards, and that has served us well. But at this point, we needed a curriculum to really drive the next step. Our plan at that point was to reflect on all of our tools and to start, as Jenny said, providing some information and some professional development. And yes, you heard that, thirty sessions of professional development. This year, we were really proud to be able to start working. But still, at a point where we said, we feel like, we feel like we've hit a roadblock, this is a barrier. And so John came in with the Language Arts Coordinators, and at this point, Jan was working with us. And we said, okay. John said, what do you need? And we said, we think we really need a new curriculum. And we looked at the old curriculum and we said, oh yeah, we really need a new curriculum. And so that leads us to our initial planning document, which is our work that's very much in progress. And Holly's going to tell you a little bit about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Nikki, and thank you for having us again tonight. The document we're going to look at now is the blue and white document that has a few green spots, squares or shapes through there. So this fall, we started our current phase of, of the work. And we created this initial planning document. And here you are seeing the very beginning of our new direction. This planning doc, document really captures our beginning thoughts as we brainstormed about the who, what, when and how of this new language arts curriculum. There is a front and a back here, and this document reads from top to bottom. So across the top, you see the blue questions. And below each question are some of the answers that we brainstormed. So as an example, the first one, what outside influences and considerations should be taking, taken into account? So here, we threw out ideas like our Universal Design for Learning initiative and also our social emotional learning. Things like our, our current tools that we had done so much research on, current research, and also our standards-based report card that's almost ready to go. So these are all things that we wanted to consider. Some other questions we had was who should be involved? And we knew we wanted students, teachers, parents, and also the many experts that we have across the district. As we went along, we also asked the question, what components should be included in the curriculum? We knew we wanted, of course, those core areas of reading, but also areas that will impact the literacy learning of, of our youngest learners. We wanted to consider the oral language development and also fine motor and what students would need to know and be able to do to really access this new curriculum. So as this planning takes shape, the next step was to develop an essential question to guide our work. And that's here. How are today's students supported to become purposeful and effective readers, writers, communicators and critical thinkers in order to pursue their individual lifelong goals? This puts the students at the center while highlighting that we're all here, part of this important work. It is everyone working together to help the students reach their goals. And at this time, again, we thank you so much for having us. And we welcome any questions or comments.
Are there any questions from the board so far? And seeing a comment maybe, or a question?
Just a closing comment and just saying, just want to, just something that Holly touched a bit about was our standards-based report card. And I just want to clarify that it's in draft form still. We're not ready for primetime yet, still a lot of work to be done. We have been meeting and doing amazing work. It really is that, that team, give them a lot of credit for the work they've done. We meet twice a month and we're, we're rolling along. And soon you will hear an update in the upcoming months from the board where we are with that. But I cannot say enough and thank this group. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with them. I learn every day when I work with them. And you can see the quality of work and documentation that you have in front of you is just a testimony of the quality of work they do each day with, with our teachers and with our students.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions? Naomi?
Not a question, but a comment. I think that one of the things that recently I seem to be asked quite often is, what do coordinators do? And what's wonderful about this particular presentation is that it really explains that. I think that a lot of people have the sense that essentially, any school district buys a bunch of textbooks, hands them out and follows that textbook, and that there's not much more to it than that. And there absolutely is, because all of these elements have to be taken into account to create a vibrant curriculum. And so I really appreciate all the papers, as well as the things that you brought to it, so that we understand it better.
I actually did have one question, and you're going to be so shocked over here, you're not going to be shocked. I noticed in a lot of the documentation, you know, we talk about interventions and getting students to reading level. I didn't see any references other than the one that, that has been filled in yet on extensions. I think that's where we always talk about that, you know, student who is, you know, at reading level, but shows the proficiency above, that one that is above reading level that really we don't want to disengage in the classroom, because they are, they're really out at the, the far edge of extension. So if you could talk about how, because the documentation, of course, is an overview, so it doesn't really get into the weeds. But how are extensions being managed so that more students can, can really be challenged?
Great question, thank you. So one of the wonderful things about ELA is we have several sources of data that we can triangulate. And so the students take, they participate in the STAR assessment. They participate in the Fountas and Pennell Assessment. They do writing assessments three times a year, a fall, winter and spring writing assessment. They do assessments for word study. And then they have their classroom assessments. And as Jenny talked about, we did some work this year in guided reading to talk about running records, which is a formative assessment. All of these assessments help us to triangulate the data to meet kids' needs. So if you come into my building during an RTI session, which happens from eight forty-five to nine twenty-five on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, what you'll see is students that are engaged and work for them. So you will see small groups of guided reading. You will see some students who are working in enrichment groups that are doing individualized book clubs based on their level. Some students who have chosen to do independent reading on their level. But we know exactly where they are. So by the time we're ready for RTI, we know where every student is, not only instructionally, but independently. So we can present them with whatever they need. So one of the wonderful things about our diamond model is we're constantly thinking about that. So if we haven't talked about it, I'm so glad that you mentioned it, because it's just part of the way that we do business, and especially in ELA. One of the wonderful things about writing is that writing is very easy to differentiate. We can always take a student from where they are based on their performance and their daily work and move them forward. One of the ways that we do that is through conferring with students individually, teaching mini lessons and then monitoring progress. So we benefit very much from the data. And we benefit from knowing where our students are and the consistent and continual data that happens so that we can always move kids forward. It's also another thing that we do in our schools is we, we talk with the teachers. So I meet with the teachers for teacher data talks, fall, winter and spring. And we talk about the students, who are your high performers? Who are your students who need something different? What might that look like? What are the child's interests? Who are your students who have some lagging skills? What do they need next? What might that look like? And we've been able to offer all kinds of really interesting enrichment opportunities through the tiered instructional activity block, which is our RTI. We've done picture book writing with students who showed exemplary skills in reading and writing, where they worked with the art teacher and the music teacher to create picture books for younger children. We have done PowerPoint, or not PowerPoint, sorry, stock animation for math. Students during this time who displayed wonderful math skills were challenged to create instructional videos with stop-go animations. So we taught them that technology skill. And they did that when they were doing the mathematical component of the RTI. So just really thinking about what's next, what are our kids excited about? And what does that data look, where does that data drive us?
Thank you. I, I see there's more.
I was just going to add just a, a little bit, when I was thinking about Nikki at the upper elementary, a couple of things to keep in mind at the elementary are that the resources and the tools that we look at in terms of what is going to serve our population, we usually think about it as a range of reading so that our tools have, you know, are accessible to students at all levels. I also wanted to say that when we think about the classroom at the elementary level, I like to emphasize flexible grouping. And so for the guided reading part of the day, they are literally in a group at, with students at their instructional reading level. However, if students are going off to centers or there's other times of the day when they are looking at content material, there's all, many opportunities to differentiate for students so that they are also excelling if they need to, or they are getting support if they need to. So in the elementary classroom, it, it happens more in the nucleus of the classroom. But we're always thinking about, these students are on a range of, you know, reading and skills. And so that's just a little bit more.
I also just wanted to share one really important piece that I think district-wide we've really been working on is inquiry. And this, that provides kids opportunities to create their own questions, to, to really drive their own learning. I know at Reed's Ferry, we've worked that piece into our schedule. So kids really, truly have a lot of opportunity to work on integrated work, so to speak. So science and social studies and English Language Arts are often integrated into different projects. And that allows for students on all ends of the spectrum to be successful. So your higher learners are working on projects that challenge them. Your, your, your kids that are perhaps in intervention groups are working on projects that challenge them, but are also on their, on their level as well. So I think in all of these aspects, our kids are, their, 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 their needs are, are being met. And I think UDL, our, our work with Universal Design for Learning is also going to have quite an impact on that as well.
Thank you, very thorough answer. My goodness, I love it. Mark?
So it's great to see my old colleagues. I told them at the beginning, I miss them. This is one of the downsides of the job I have now. I don't get to work with these people as much anymore, and I hate that part. So it's nice to see you all. And I just wanted to just, just kind of call out a couple of things that they said, because it's worth repeating. One of the things I was alluding to with the, when the state legislators were here was relative to assessments, the, the importance of stability. We have not had assessment stability in the state of New Hampshire since the last ten years. I'll also tell you another important thing, which is that about seven years ago or so, the College and Career Ready Standards were introduced into, well, across the United States, because this was an initiative of the fifty states, and the governors of the fifty states chose to adopt them. That was a sea change, and it was also a very controversial change at the time. But it was a sea change in some respects, in many respects, about the way that we delivered our instruction for all core content. And, and in some respects, New Hampshire was well-positioned for that change. But it was still a significant change. The reason I point to that is that stability matters. So for all the years that that was introduced, you don't introduce a change like that and then, and then have in the following fall, everything falls into place. It takes years for teachers to adjust to the impact of the different requirements and what their impacts are on instruction and how that, what that impact is relative to the use of tools that they have at their disposal. Questions about what additional tools do we need now that we know what these standards are? And we're a standards-driven environment. So the fact that they are now have taken the challenge to So the fact that they are now have taken the challenge to go to the next step, which is to consolidate all of this new learning and this new experience into a curriculum is a testimony to how hard it is, um, to actually affect change in any organization, not just Meramec. But, but I also, uh, want you to remember that you heard is, um, is professional development. Because these teach, these, and they are teachers in addition to being coordinators and department heads, they recognize that they have a responsibility to train their teachers. It's not enough to say, here's a standard, here's a tool, do it. They actually have to teach and train these people to do it. And, and they are doing that every day. So I appreciate board member Schoenfeld speaking about the role of the coordinators because that is in fact one of the many components of their job that they do. They bring training to their teachers. You also heard data, uh, and, and I think that you can see just by the way that they're speaking to their qualifications. So this isn't about them tonight. I merely point out that, um, that, um, our district has really tried to be about innovation, trying to stay up with the, the times, which have been changing a lot underneath us. This is not, um, the schooling that any of us who are, you know, over twenty-five would maybe have remembered, just not. And, uh, and so I just really wanna thank, really thank these people. But for every person who's sitting here, you have teams and teams and teams of teachers that they support who are also doing this work. And I know you know that, but it's important because some of that can be taken for granted. And it's not nothing, the changes that have been impacting our state and other states for this last number of years. And you can either roll over and say, nope, no change here, we're just gonna do what we've always done. Or you can embrace the change and then accept that for a while, there's gonna be a little bit of, uh, sorting out. And what you're hearing today and all the people that they represent are doing that sorting out while maintaining, I would say, really high quality a delivery of education for students. So yes, it's rah rah, but I'm very proud of these people and our teachers and I think it's just worth using this opportunity tonight to say so. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Um, with no other questions or comments, we thank you for the testimony that you provided. It's very enlightening and it's a lot of work ahead of you. So good luck with all of that. And, uh, and thank you for all that you do. And while they're clearing out, I will introduce item number five, which is impacts on school and district operations. In the event of any additional proposed reductions to the school board-approved twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one district budget. So I'll turn the mic over to Mark, Matt and John. Mark, I'll have you take point, obviously. And, uh, we'll talk about, um, the genesis of this, this agenda item and, um, basically what's, you know, what we would be looking at if what we presented last Thursday had adjustments. So thank you.
So thank you. Um, so I wanna, uh, I wanna be very, very precise in how I talk about this agenda item tonight. I wanna be clear that, um, the board, uh, voted on and approved a budget last week. There were over a million dollars in cuts that this board saw fit to, uh, implement, uh, which I think is, oh, obviously it is exactly their prerogative to do. And, and that, um, brings us to now the, the board's budget, which now goes, for those who might not know, that goes to two places. It now goes to the budget committee. So we're fortunate in Meramec to have another body that takes a look at this process. And then it becomes their responsibility to look at it from their perspective. It is at that place that two things can happen, uh, and adjustments can be made from, from that perspective, from the, uh, budget committee perspective. There is one final place and that is deliberative session. And at deliberative session, uh, adjustments can be made either up or down to the budget as well. So I wanna be clear, the item here tonight has nothing to do with the district administration's desire for more cuts. Or I think I can speak for the board because had they, uh, wanted them, that would have been included last, last week. It's a million dollars in cuts that the board approved. So the question comes up periodically, well, what, what if any entity, for whatever reason, chose to make additional cuts? What would happen? And, uh, I think it's important to share because these are real students and real programs that are impacted. And so when we put a budget together, very mindful of the taxpayer, but I will say unashamedly that we are also, by we, I mean the administration and I know the board as well, are committed to providing, um, the students of this district with the best education that we can deliver. I make no apologies for that. So, uh, in the event that there were any, uh, parties who sought to make additional adjustments, perhaps downward in the budget, it'd be important to know that these are real students with real consequence, real programs with real consequences. So I just want to just spend a few minutes sharing some of those with you. There may be a significant difference of opinion on, uh, the matter of personnel. But, uh, in my role as the superintendent, I would not ever volunteer personnel to be cut first, just wouldn't do it. You saw tonight an example of the benefit we get from qualified teachers teaching our students. And we have that and we have had a system in place to incentivize teachers to gain education in this district. So that that education then can be translated and transmitted to their students. So I am not in favor of doing that. So when we look for significant cuts, we're gonna start looking elsewhere. So I would just give you, uh, an example. Roughly an additional million dollars in cuts to what is already there, should anybody ever propose that. Uh, I would say would have to come from things like, uh, co-curriculars. We make these decisions based on what we're required to offer. Are we required to offer co-curriculars? No. Uh, we, so therefore that would be an example. Field trips, furniture replacement. We're not required, for instance, to provide a gifted and talented program. So Chair Barnes just asked what we do for extensions. We're not required to provide extensions to students through our gifted and talented program. And so that personnel could go. We would have to take a look at, uh, band and chorus. Uh, we would have to remove, uh, all furniture replacement. That essentially would get you your first million dollars. If we were to continue, uh, we would have to look at sports. We're not required to offer sports. So we would have to look at our sports programs first. We would have to look at text materials. So what would an impact of text materials be? The very things that these, uh, teachers were sharing with you tonight, just as an example, would have to, um, be suspended, completely suspended. So there would not be new materials in the hands of our students. We would, given these cuts, we would very likely therefore not be in line to be accredited by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. So therefore, if that's the case, we might as well not invite them back. And so we could save money by not having that team come to us. We would, um, no longer be able to support Project Safeguard. And if anybody's been paying even the slightest bit of attention to us over the last couple of years, you would know that Project Safeguard is just one example of a program that, um, is intended to support the needs of students in transitional periods, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, middle school, very significant times in their life to make, uh, to learn and work through how to make good choices through a program that's been around forever. These are just the hard facts that need to be shared with anybody who would contemplate additional cuts. I'm not going to pretend that they wouldn't hurt. These are the realities. In addition, uh, we would have to, uh, contemplate the following. We are not required to have world language. It's not a graduation requirement. It is a requirement to have, uh, a program. So we could theoretically, meaning a world language presence, so we could theoretically have, only offer French and eliminate every other world language program and just say, Meramec, we teach French. I think the board testified last week, what that means is that that would be a significant change to the way that we operate. Because right now, we are unique in the state of New Hampshire for having French, Spanish, Latin, Arabic and Mandarin. Technically, would we not be required to offer that? Yes, that's true. And anybody who is interested in having their students be competitive going to college would have quite a challenge to be able to apply even to UNH that requires three and sometimes four years of a world language. We would not be able to do that. We'd still be able to be within our minimum standards. We would have to contemplate, uh, further staff reductions at this point because they're literally, given what I've just described to you, there would be no other stuff. Really, we have evacuated the stuff. So now we'd have to really go to personnel. If we were to eliminate, uh, personnel to stay within the state minimum standards, let me tell you what that means. We, from grades five through twelve, uh, we can, uh, have class sizes up to thirty. So if we were to do that, we could eliminate, uh, nine teachers at the elementary and, uh, upper, at the elementary and upper elementary grades. And that would put us at, at or just below thirty students per teacher without a single student moving into Meramec School District. So that's the consequence of a cut that steep. But if there is an intent to get to a certain number, that's what that would require. We would have to eliminate, by the way, I forgot to mention, I'm gonna ask my colleagues to join in a minute. That would also, uh, in terms of stuff, I must say, uh, that we would have to eliminate anything related to technology upgrades. When we look at the, uh, professional staff, I know that's tempting. But what that fundamentally means is a complete change in the way that Meramec School District provides, uh, competitive education to its students. Not just students, by the way, who go to college, but students who need to be career-ready. We have a vigorous program in automotive and woodworking that, uh, that students, many of whom, for whatever reason, are not opting to go to college, um, immediately, might never choose to go to college, which is a perfectly viable option, would instead go into a career that they could be well-served and being prepared for through just our woodworking and our, um, automotive program. Those clearly would have to go because they're not graduation requirements. So if we're gonna get really particular about a graduation requirement, then, uh, then all of the things that allow a student to remain, to want to come to school, to remain in school, would have to go away. I also would have to point out that, um, uh, we in Meramec for years have had one of the lesser graduation requirements at twenty-one credits. Many, uh, area schools require more classes for credit. We just have twenty-one. But what that would mean is that in addition to the required courses, students would, must take elective courses. And so you can't get elective courses from your core content. So we'd have to re-keep enough teachers so that students could literally choose to take elective courses to get them to twenty-one. And if we ever decided, um, that we wanted in the future to be, uh, more aligned to other districts in the state for graduation requirements, then we'd have to increase that number of teachers because you can't have twelve hundred t, uh, students with a number going up. And so few, uh, teachers that they just teach core courses because they literally must take elective courses. I wanna just give you just a little insight, uh, without being specific about student. I wanna tell you that, um, last year, we had students go to Harvard, Dartmouth, the New England Conservatory of Music, Boston College, Worcester Polytechnic, University of Connecticut, Champlain College, St. Anson College, UNH and Tufts. And that's, uh, rounding out our top, uh, twenty. So multiples there. The, uh, some students earned, among those that I just mentioned, twenty-six point seven five credits, twenty-six point eight, twenty-three point five, twenty-four point five, twenty-seven seven. So the students who go to the most competitive schools are opting for well more than the twenty-one credits. And with the plan that I've just offered to you, they couldn't do that. They couldn't do that. So if we're really serious about providing our students with an optimal, uh, college, uh, an optimal preparation to, to live out their dreams and go where they wish to go, I think we have to be very, uh, we have to get really serious and practical about what that means because we couldn't do it, just couldn't do it. And I also just wanna say that, um, college is not necessarily the only option for students. And it doesn't need to be. So we have programs in this building that serve the needs of students who are gonna make another decision. And if those programs are, uh, if, if cuts are made such that those programs need to be contemplated, they'll be contemplated because they're not graduation requirements. So we talked a little bit recently about, uh, our graduation rates and concern therein. We share it. It's, it's, uh, it is something that is dramatically impacted by any such reduction. So, um, and any such reduction, were it ever to be, um, motioned or contemplated, would require a, uh, there would have to be really frankly, an emergency meeting with the school board administration and particularly at the high school, uh, high school administration to discuss what the ramifications on its schedule would be. But there would be nothing familiar whatsoever, uh, in the program that we offer now and what would need to be offered in that, in that, um, eventuality. So I don't suggest this in a way, uh, to, uh, be dramatic. But it's dramatic enough what it is. So if we're talking about significant cuts past what this board suggested, um, it gets really real. And, uh, people, I, I just think, uh, deserve to know what that means. They deserve to know what that means. And it would be, um, uh, poor leadership to not, um, discuss, even if the truth is uncomfortable, what that actually would mean. And so I'm happy to share with you tonight, um, answers to some specific questions. But I just wanna close by saying, this is an exercise that is, um, risky because it suggests, uh, it could never suggest. I don't want anybody to suggest that this is something that anybody here, uh, contemplates or would suggest is something, um, that could be done. I am here to tell you, uh, if it were to be done, it would fundamentally change the way this district operates and the supports that it provides to its students. That's just a fact. And, um, if that were to be contemplated, I think the, uh, people in town need to know what that means. So I share that with you and I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions? Uh, Andy?
So obviously this is not a path that I would ever support. But one of the questions that I had that I'd like your insight on is I noticed in your proposed reductions and stuff that one area was not addressed, was anything around special ed. Can you talk about where, when, when we had the, the budget review for special ed, I specifically asked, um, Heather Barker whether a Meramec was going above and beyond, if there were opportunities for us to streamline or anything like that. And she explained that what we're doing is what, what was required for the students that needed support. Can you explain why, if somebody did propose such a dramatic cut, why special ed would not be an area that we would go to? Because the reason I say that is because many times people say that we're overspending on special ed, we should do the bare minimum. And I, I think from what I heard, that we are doing what we're required by law to do. But I just want you to explain that again.
Sure. Um, I've said this a few times over the years, so I can certainly repeat this one. Our special ed budget is built IEP by IEP, student by student involving families. The services that are talked about around the table, the service grid is filled, filled out with what services those child needs. And for all, all the students that are, that are, um, identified in special ed, we then take each one of those IEPs, we add up the services, look at the amount of personnel that are needed to provide those services to each kid. That is all part of the process. And when that final number comes through, that is how we build the budget. We hire services based on that budget. We hire personnel based on that budget. That's how it is built. So, um, that question of, that budget. That's how it is built. So that question of over-serving, we're serving what's required by law and what's been agreed upon in the legal document, the IEP.
Just want to add that what Mrs. Barker was saying is an example of what we always do, which is that in, we don't take for granted anything that we do as always being the way that we're going to do it in the future. So what Mrs. Barker, with her new eyes, is always doing is looking at ways that we can increase efficiencies, the ways that we can use our current resources more efficiently. And that's always something we do. If I've, I've, I've tried to indicate to the board in my time in my other role and now, this is not a district that sits around and says, what we've always done is what we're going to do. And we don't, we don't operate that way. So what I think Mrs. Barker was alluding to is the kind of work we always do, which is take a look at what we've, what we do and try to figure out if we can do it more efficiently and, and then, and not say, no, we're not going to contemplate that because that's not how Merrimack does. So, and that I think is something that the board expects us to be, to do, and that's what we do. But I think John's answer is, is the one that carries the day in terms of what our responsibilities are for family by family.
John?
And just to remind the board and the public too, is that we are, special ed is under an amazing amount of regulation, auditing that happens yearly, and compliance requirements. That Merrimack continues each year to meet those requirements and every year is audited. So the, the question of over-serving, over-identifying, under-identifying, all those things are audited by the state of New Hampshire. And then even more thoroughly with progress monitoring done every five years where they come in and audit all of our files. So it's one of those things that's amazingly regulated and that we do meet the compliance for that each year.
Thanks for adding that, John. Are there any other questions? Brandy?
This is not a question, but rather a statement. I am challenged by even discussing an impact of a $5 million reduction in our next year's budget. I, I am, I am frustrated because I know that there is a, a community need to keep an eye out for our tax burden. And I totally can appreciate where all of us taxpayers are in wanting to ensure that we are spending money appropriately and putting money to good use. And I respect that. I respect every taxpayer. I am one and I too can understand the desire to lower our taxes. However, I, I have to say that I'm challenged by the idea that perception is reality. And in certain cases, I see that there is a strong perception that our buildings, our classrooms are overpopulated or overstaffed, I should say, not overpopulated, but overstaffed, that our choices in contractors, our choices in how we choose to allocate funds is perhaps misguided. I'm struggling with that as a taxpayer because in no way, shape, or form do I agree with that. I would of course love to pay less in taxes, however, at what cost? And if we are going to start talking about student outcomes and choosing a, a idea that lowering money spent on our buildings, on our roofs, on a bat situation, or on our students is even an option, I'm struggling with that choice. I cannot speak for the entire board, but as a board member, that is not something I would ever support. And while it might not be popular by the community, I can tell you for a fact that our buildings are filled with teachers who, in my personal opinion, go above and beyond every single day, without question. And they are not just teachers. You are talking about individuals that are giving up their time, their personal time. They are, the amount of stuff that a teacher has going on in a classroom, I'm in awe on a continuum every time I go in to a classroom and I sub, every time I walk into the buildings to pick up one of my kids. So to talk about personnel as if it's an option, or to talk about athletics, or to talk about field trips, or to talk about furniture, or our gifted and talented programs, all of which are essential, in my personal opinion, to having a well-rounded district, a district that we should all be proud of. I have serious concerns relative to our conversations surrounding what can go and what can't go. As a taxpayer, my money is well-spent on our infrastructure, is well-spent on our teachers, well-spent on every element that goes into teaching our children. So when I look at this, I get fiery, as you can tell, because in no way would or could I support any additional reductions in our budget at this point.
Any comments? I have a couple of comments. We're responding to this because we had a group of concerned taxpayers and they said that they didn't understand the process. This is in the hands of our budget committee, who does understand our process for the most part. I know there's a couple of new members who are learning the processes as it goes this year. But to that end, you know, there are three steps that, that Mark framed out before he started what, what would be the worst-case scenario. And what he, I mean, I would say what was presented is completely realistic. If a cut was made of, a cut was made successfully delivered of $5 million, this place isn't going to be recognizable. And for us to hold our administration to a standard of student outcomes would be impossible. So as those who didn't understand our process and what we do going into this because, and to be honest with you, I'm, I'm going to read our code of ethics right now. That, that's my plan, which is why I have my phone out, which I never do during meetings. But this is why I'm doing it, because I keep it electronically and I've used this. I've, I've talked to other boards and other board members with my role at AHSBA and I'd say, I guide this. I keep it on my phone for a reason, because it really is something that guides everything we do. And we don't just sign it once a year and forget about it. It's how we do business. So I'm going to read the code of ethics. I know it's, you know, a little long-winded, but it's not too awful, I promise. "As a member of the Merrimack School Board, I shall promote the best interests of the district by adhering to the following ethical standards and affix my signature to the same. Trustworthy in responsibilities, I will always remember that my first and greatest concern will be the educational welfare of the students of Merrimack School District. I will be responsible to the public by accurately representing district policies, programs, priorities, and progress. I will be responsive to the community by seeking its involvement in district affairs and by communicating its priorities and concerns. I will work to ensure prudent and accountable use of district resources and never lose sight of the fiscal responsibility owed to the taxpayers of the district. I will make no personal promise or take private action that may compromise my performance or my responsibilities or those of my fellow board members. I will avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using my board position for personal partisan gain. Honor in conduct, I will be honest, fair, just, and impartial in all my decisions and actions. I will encourage and respect open dialogue and listen with an open mind while working for consensus. I will respect the majority decision as the decision of the board. Integrity of character, I will consistently uphold all applicable laws, rules, policies, and district procedures. I will not disclose information that is confidential by law or that will undermine the district. In commitment of service, I will focus my attention on fulfilling the board's responsibilities of goal-setting, policymaking, and evaluation. I will diligently prepare for and attend board meetings. I will avoid personal involvement and activities the board has delegated to the superintendent and I'll inform myself about relevant educational issues." I can't see a better example of a board doing that, day in, day out, year in, year out, than this board has, has done for, for a long time. We've had exceptions to that rule serving us and, but I think really those principles have carried the day for a number of years. So, you know, we, we've, we get mutterings from Facebook. We get people that tell us what they've read on Facebook. Sometimes we've seen it personally. Sometimes it's not available to us, but this is how we work. And I think everything we've done in this budget process is consistent with the code of ethics and the, that's basically the job we sign up for every year. And we validate that every single year when we sign off on this. So when you're talking about what budget we produced, the process we got to produce the budget, the transparency in which we, we did that work, we couldn't have done anything more than we've already done. And for that reason, I'm glad we did this exercise. But just know that, you know, what we presented, what this board presented is what we feel can meet those expectations, putting the students first, considering the taxpayer in, in our decisions. And so thank you for doing the exercise. I know it was probably a painful process. I know it meant that it was a day that you didn't work on curriculum. You didn't, you know, work on preparing for the audit that will eventually come, Matt. It won't, you know, work on building the team district-wide, Mark, that you have worked so hard since July 1st in your first year with the district to do. And knowing that, you know, before the budget committee gets this budget for their first night, I wanted this vetted because they're going to start taking testimony from the community and it's good for them to know what, you know, a draconian cut would look like. So, and, and we just showed it. So with that, thank you for the work. I look forward to hearing about, you know, more academic things like we did tonight, because I think that really does kind of put the, put the pencil point to, to the paper that we're trying to write here. That's exactly what we want to do is improve student outcomes, give them all the tools to thrive in whatever choice they make for college or career readiness, whatever their choice is. And, and we thank, we thank all of the people in this district for doing their part. So I just wanted to put that out there. And that's what this exercise was designed to do. So if there's no other questions or comments, we'll go on to the housekeeping portion of the show. And that is item number six, which is the approval of January 7th, 2020 minutes. I'll entertain a motion made by Andy, seconded by Brandy. Are there adjustments to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 400. We are on to item number seven, the board's response to the acceptance and expenditure of gifts and grants, $5,000 and over. So tonight, we heard testimony from, from our first robotics mentor and our assistant principal, Peter Bergeron, regarding the gift from Elbit Systems of America for $5,000. We did not get any questions from the public. We had no questions at the time as a board while they were here to provide their testimony. So at this point, if there's no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to accept. Andy?
I move that we accept the gift of $5,000 from Elbit Systems to be utilized for the first program as described earlier in this with our sincere gratitude and thanks.
Thank you. Andy, is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 400. Item number eight is consent agenda with John.
Thank you. This evening, I have one resignation. That's Laura Nelson, Special Ed Coordinator at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School.
Thank you, John. I will entertain a motion. Andy?
I move we accept the resignation as read.
Seconded, seconded by Brandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries 500, or 400. I was practicing with my head. Item number nine is other correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come before the board? I have a few and then I'll open it up to the floor. We received a right-to-no request. I was copied on that for a question on bids. I believe we were all copied on that, but I just want to be sure. I was looking on my phone for that one and that, I think came in today. I got notice from a parent that wanted to understand how we introduce new curriculum. Kind of went through the overview of that, you know, what would be, you know, I guess she was asking if it was policy and it's definitely more of a process because it's more usually inside-out that curriculum comes. We received communication from state rep Wendy Thomas, who sent her regrets. She had a previous commitment tonight and she wanted to know the board's position on Medicaid, which, you know, we validated again tonight, that our, our funding is being, the funding that we can actually apply for is 10% of what we budgeted for, based on the changes at the Department of Health and Human Services in Concord and its impact to our operation. And I will just reply to her that we discussed that tonight and, and that's where we stand. Tonight's agenda item of state advocacy, which is number three, was a result of a communication from state rep Rosemary Rung. And thank you for coming as well, Rosemary, tonight. Basically that there are bills coming up. They're starting to become live and to get an idea of what the board's position would be on that. Again, we are a board, individuals. We can always reach out to our state reps as an individual who happens to be on the board, but it would definitely be your position, not the board's. And then I had another constituent ask about what flexibility we have with health insurance options. So that's what I had. Are there any other correspondence to come before the Okay. Seeing no others. Comments? Are there any comments from the board? Seeing none. New business. Is there any new business for the board? I'm looking to the left first because I always forget you on the left. And I'm looking to the right. I see none. Item number 11 is public comments on agenda items. If there's anyone from the public, because there's one, two people left, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Chuck Mower, Ford Depot Street. I hope that the public takes advantage of their opportunity to watch these meetings at home and understand the complicated nature of this municipal corporation, not unlike many others in the state of New Hampshire. We are all concerned about our taxes. The problem, however, does not lie in Merrimack because the government that is closest to us is in fact our best government. The problem lies at the legislature in the state of New Hampshire. Their parsimony and their constant desire to balance their budgets on the backs of local property owners has been something of many years in the making. And we have grown under that burden. And we are continuing to grow under that burden, not a burden of our own making. And in fact, until the state of New Hampshire realizes what it must do to give relief to property tax owners, we must accept that we have two choices. We can live in a town with high taxes and no services, or we can live in a town with a little bit higher taxes and good services. I think that is the choice that we have made over time. I hope that that is the choice that we will continue to make. Our advances have been hard-fought and they are fragile. God bless us all.
Thank you, Mr. Mower. If there's no one else that would like to speak under public comment, we will close public comment. We'll take a moment to sign the manifest and I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSA 91-a colon three, section, Roman numeral two sections A, B, and C, made by Andy, seconded by Brandy. Brandy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Naomi?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion carries 500, or 400, sorry again. Thank you and good night.